Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, May 8th, 2025, Marlington Local School District Board of Education Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let me give the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Josh Hagan, here. Here, Humphreys.
Here.
Mark Ryan.
Here.
Jonathan Swift.
Here.
Kathy Krepko is absent. Reading of the mission statement, Mr. Ryan.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the meeting agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphreys?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Thank you, special presentations.
Okay, good evening. We're on special presentations tonight, so this is a, we're gonna have multiple special presentations tonight, but we are gonna start off with our high school Elks Students of the Month. So I'm gonna have Mr. Farrell come on up and start off with the student presentation portion.
Good evening. I honestly, I don't think either one of our Elks Teens of the Month are here right now because one of them is playing softball against Alliance and the other one is playing baseball against Lake Center Christian. But since this is very important, I still wanna take a moment to brag about them a little bit and share with what their teachers have said about them. So our first Elks Teen of the Month is Faith Savage. Faith is the daughter of Ann Leisure and she's Secretary of National Honor Society, Yearbook Club Editor, and member of Character Counts Club. Faith is a captain on the Varsity Girls Tennis and Softball Teams. In her free time, Faith enjoys working on cars, volunteering with the Red Cross Blood Drives, Exceptional Olympics, and the Waterloo Community Helping Hands. After graduation, she plans to attend Wright State University to pursue a degree in mechanical engineering with a focus in automotive. Mr. Denny had the following to say about Faith. During her time at Marlington High School, I've had the opportunity to work closely with Faith as her engineering teacher and her tennis coach. She's consistently demonstrated exceptional dedication and perseverance both as an athlete and a student. As a tennis team captain, she and her partner were undefeated this year and were league champions. In her class, she works, in her classwork, she always goes the extra mile to do things the right way. Faith is the hardest-working student I've had in several years. Whether she's tackling a challenging senior project or assisting as a student aide, Faith's relentless commitment to excellence and her proactive spirit set her apart. Her classmates find her to be easy to work with and she functions well in a group where she's equally comfortable with leading as she is following. She's currently working with a group on a senior project and they're working together to invent a new product. Whatever course they ultimately decide on, I can be sure of one thing, that Faith will not give up until it works. Another round of applause for Faith Savage. Our other Elks Teen of the Month at the high school is Dylan Heatherington. Dylan is the son of Eric and Rebecca Heatherington. He is a captain on the Varsity Boys Baseball and Basketball Teams. Dylan is a member of Character Counts Club and the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. He enjoys volunteering at the Stark County Board of Elections and with the Alliance Rotary Club Flag Project. In his free time, Dylan enjoys sports, playing card and board games, and spending time with his friends and family. Following graduation, he plans to continue his academic and baseball career at the University of Finley while majoring in business finance. Mr. Locke said the following about Dylan. Dylan's an exceptional young man. Academically, he is a model student in every way. He is very conscientious when it comes to doing his work and always puts forth his best effort in his assignments. He has a strong work ethic and is never satisfied with anything less than his best. He also represents Marlington well in athletics. He's very much a team player and he deserves, he serves a wonderful role model for underclassmen. He displays fairness and determination as an asset among the players on the team. Dylan has many positive characteristics. He's always friendly, polite, and respectful. His pleasant personality and positive attitude make him a joy to be around. He is a person of integrity and it is evident that his behavior is guided by his morals and his convictions. He sets high standards for himself and then works hard to achieve them. Dylan is the type of student who makes Marlington proud and he is more than deserving of this honor. How about congratulations for Dylan Heatherington?
Okay, good evening. We do have multiple presentations to give tonight, so I get to welcome the nice crowd. So every May, this is probably one of the best board meetings we have. We get to honor our staff that has actually been here 20 years, which is one heck of accomplishment to stay in one district in 20 years if you actually follow the realm of education now. Most people jump within their first five, maybe now within their first 10, and so forth. I've seen people jump even further. And then obviously, we have retirees here tonight. People that have been with, in the education field one way or another for at least 32 years. So we're gonna have a little discussion about that tonight, okay? So we're talking about our 20 years. So we have 12 20-year people this year. So that's quite an amazing class from, you know, 20 years ago, which meant about 2004, 2005 class is where we're at. I look at a 20-year, somebody that's a ton of dedication, professionalism, strength. It's just to stay that long is amazing. So we're just gonna call you up and kinda give you a gift. There's not a whole lot we say except for the fact that 20 years is just an amazingly cosmos. So if you could just come up, kinda stand up here, we'll get an idea of who has been here for 20 years and we'll give them a nice round of applause because they are a huge and vital part to the success of our district. So I don't know if everybody's here tonight, but I think the majority of them are. So some of them, it was great because we'll, we'll tell you a little bit more here in a second. So we're gonna start with Stephanie Kerserides. Eric Seiders. Nick Evinich is not here. He is actually with his eldest son, so he apologizes. Joyce Steiger. Joyce is my son's bus driver, so we're gonna have a little conversation tomorrow. I'll catch her on that end of it, so Joyce is on that one. I do know that this young lady, I'm still gonna say her name because she was also one of our cooks at the middle school, Holly Mick, is not here tonight either. She could not make it. Looking around here. Chris Cannon, is he here? Ah, there's another one. Chris Cannon, our head custodian at the high school. Did not make it tonight. Uh, she is here, I know that, Jackie Gilli. If you have any issues with our food department, Jackie is in charge of it all, so that's where you get Jackie. All right, no problem. This, this young lady I got to hire, was my first hire, so Denise Wood. Another young lady was one of my first hires, Denise, and the other one would have been Amy Rovnak, but she is also, cannot attend tonight. Another fine young lady, Julie Ryan. And kindergarten teacher that I like to harass her class often is Jessica Glay. The last person on the list, and I'll say it, is actually myself, Dan Swisher. This is a portion of our class that was hired that year, which was, in my opinion, the, a fantastic hiring class by the board, you know, 20 years ago. And it's nice to see at least 12 people still here after 20 years. That's pretty impressive when you look at the list. So we do appreciate the service of our 20s. Look forward to see the next, I think they got 12 left now is what they're counting on. So thank you guys very much. All right, retirees. Now they get a little bit more special attention for retirees. So we have 14 retirees this year. 14. Not all 14 are here, but I think most of them are. So typically, in Marlington's fashion, we will have a speaker that's maybe tied to their department or their building principal while it is to come up and give, you know, a brief few words about their career and their retirement. So I am going to start off with Sherry Sickles. I told, I warned her. I mean, I went to her office and I told her, I was letting, I was putting her on, I was starting her off. Sherry Sickles is the head of our transportation department. She is going to speak on two retirees. All right, so I'm gonna let her choose which house she wants to do the two and we will be right here. Thank you.
So I'm gonna call Mike Hoover up here. So Mike is a Marlington 1976 grad. He's been working here at Marlington Transportation Department here for 26 years. Before he came here, he was working midnights at American Steel. He also started his quality lawn care business back then also. He worked midnights, came home and slept for a couple hours, and then got up, took care of his clients' lawns, and laid back down for a few hours to go back to work again on the midnight shift. When he got laid off, he decided to get his CDL and then he heard that Marlington was having a pre-service bus class here at the school and was trained to be a bus driver. He still continues to grow his lawn care business. Now, he's been in business for 32 years with that. He's raised three children, all Marlington grads, two sons and a daughter, and they started working with him since they were 13 years old. He also has, and they're also still working with him. Driving a school bus gave him the freedom to work in between his lawn care business and had health care for his family. Mike has always been a hard worker and I could always depend on him to be there to drive his route. Even over the past several years, he's had several setbacks. In the past 12 years, he's lost his mom, his niece, his sister-in-law, his brother recently, father-in-law, and recently his mother-in-law. 14 years ago, he had back surgery. 13 years ago, he had open heart surgery. And since then, he's had two hip replacements and a couple of stints put in in the past couple of years. His wife Louise has been fighting cancer for the past five years, but has been going strong and doing great recently. He's been happily married to Louise, he told me, for 44 years, 11 months, one day, six hours, and maybe 32 minutes. I asked Mike what he plans to do after retiring. He says he plans to cut back on his work only about 50 hours a week on his lawn care business. So maybe he'll do a little bit of traveling, spend more time with his two granddaughters, finish remodeling his house. I will certainly miss his dry sense of humor over on the bus radio. Every time it's foggy in the morning, I always expect him, to hear him say, requesting a song "Slow Ride" by Foghat. Which didn't say that the other morning, I know. Did you? Okay. We all wanna thank you for the years that you did delivering the dukes here at Marlington and wish you well on your next chapter. Next, I'm gonna call up- Next, I'm gonna call up Michelle Streifler. So Michelle, she retired as a head cook but started out as a bus driver, so I guess I've worked with her longer in the transportation department, so I'm gonna talk about her career at Marlington. Michelle's been working with the district for about 27 years. She started driving bus back in 1997. She drove preschool for a couple of years, got a regular route, and she worked in just about every building as either a sub or under a contracted position. She did latchkey for a short time. She was PTO Vice President for five years, active in the band boosters for five years. She's organized many fundraisers over the years. And when she was a bus driver, we did chicken and biscuit dinners at the Washington Fire Department to raise money for the band and Relay for Life when we used to have it down at our stadium. We did soup and sandwich fundraisers. She worked at Washington Cafeteria for roughly about 12 years on and off. Back in 2013, she started her own restaurant called Katie's Corner down on the east side of town for a couple of years, but still continued to drive athletic trips to help me out. She was hired back full-time bus driver in 2016. Then five years ago, when the district reopened Marlington, or Marlboro Elementary, she was hired as the head cook there. And she scrambled to get the kitchen ready for that school year with all the pants and utensils, buckets and mops gone missing when the school closed. She put long hours in to get ready for the kids to start back to school that year with a newly renovated building. Then last fall, she transferred over to the middle school head cook to finish out her time before retiring. Michelle has done many behind-the-scenes acts of kindness that a lot of people don't really know about. She always said she bleeds orange and black. So Michelle and her husband Keith, after retiring, will be celebrating her retirement with a trip to Cancun next week and then possibly in December, a cruise around the Hawaiian Islands. We'd like to thank her for her years of service here at Marlington and congratulate her and wish her well in her future endeavors.
I don't want the night to go on because I would love to say something about each person on here because when you're here 20 years, you've worked with most of them in some capacity. So Mike and Michelle are just two absolutely amazing people that are gonna be missed in our district. Next up is going to, is going to be Jackie. He's going, she is our head of food services and now newly in charge of trips for the district. So she's got a couple dual roles. I'm gonna let her speak on a few people.
Good evening. I would like to honor a couple wonderful ladies tonight for their many, many years of dedication to feeding our children. First, I would like to recognize Bonnie Frank, who couldn't be here tonight. Bonnie has been with us for 17 and a half years in the Marlboro kitchen and most recently in the high school kitchen as an assistant head cook. She is looking forward to spending more time with her grandchildren and she will be greatly missed. Next, I'd like to recognize Suzie Clark. Suzie has been with us for an astounding 33 years, all of which have been in the Washington kitchen. She can honestly do anything and everything in that kitchen with her eyes closed. Suzie is looking forward to spending more time with her family and friends, but she is most excited about sleeping in. Suzie, you are one of the sweetest and caring people I know and I'm really going to miss you. Thank you.
It's sad that Bonnie couldn't make it and Suzie. I actually forgot my checkbook because I know I owe, my son owes money. I know it, thanks for the text. I spent about 12 of my 20 years have been with Mrs. Clark at Washington or right around 10 to 12 years, I think I've been in and out of there. So it's been, it's been an amazing run and she does know the kitchen. When I started, everything was homemade. I mean, it did not matter. It was rolls, bread, you name it, it was homemade. The pizza was homemade and how much times have changed. You know, a lot of it's due to finances or due to time, but it's just been, thank you. It's been good. The kids are gonna miss you, a lot of kids. Next up is, oh, I kinda had a different order here because I'm gonna stay with office and then down, so I'll go. All right. So I am going to have Kim Atkins come up, please. I'm very upset at myself because I actually typed up something and printed it off and left it on the printer. Atkins. And I even said that because I was thinking that and I saw it. Oh, Miss Kim. I sometimes refer to Miss Kim as Little Kim and I give her that. She has been with Marlington for 23 years in whole various capacities. Most recently, for the last, I don't know how many years, since 2016? So we've been there, so you're almost nine years. Miss Kim has basically been the forefront of our office. So if you come into central office, you're going to see Kim. And that's just like one of her litany of roles. And, you know, they always say that things run in threes, okay? Kim had the threes this year. Okay, she fell. Huh? Oh, car accident. Then she got sick, then she fell and broke her arm. So it runs in threes. So Kim had to take some time off, which was unusual for Kim, but we didn't notice how much she does till Kim decides not to be there. Okay, so it's a whole different. So it's amazing because she, not only does she welcome staff and visitors, she's very kind, she's always professional. She handles all the mail that comes in the district. So if you figure a district, that's a $26 million company, it's a lot of mail that comes in and out. On top of that, she has the duty of organizing all the files. So you think about things as people leave, we have files that have to be retained based on our records forever. So it's, it's just an essential piece that doesn't, goes completely unnoticed, but you'd be amazed how many people request a record maybe when they're 20, 30 years ago. They come back and that's what they need. On top of that, she had a role for years, which is leaving with her, by the way, of making copies for people in the district, thousands and thousands of copies. All it was, they called it Hercules, that was a copy machine. So Hercules is retiring with Kim. So okay, so we're not having that going on anymore like that. She has been with us since 2001. She started off in the lunchroom and that did not last very long. She got hired shortly after that as a paraprofessional and she's worked in every building in the district with the exception of Washington. So she's been in central office, she's worked at Marlboro, she's worked at Lexington, the high school and middle school. She has, I kinda asked her like, you know, things that are memories. And she had a child, she said, for about five, six years that she kinda traveled with as a paraprofessional. And that's rare these days, you know, because sometimes it gets too much of attachment or a child doesn't stay that long when you have to support a kid that has specific needs. And she said this kid was just an amazing kid and she quite enjoyed it. She goes, he got quite big. And she, she used different words, I'm just saying he's a little ornery, kept her on her toes the older she got. She has two sons, Cody and Clay, right? Right, Cody's I think 34 and 29, I'm not sure which is back there right now. That's Clay, all right. For the younger one, on that end. She has, and I'll tell you this, I mean, from 2005, 2007, she battled leukemia and won. So I can't deny that. And that's just, you know, I mean, that's, you know, it's just an amazing accomplishment itself right there. I guess I can't, some of the stuff I would like to, I just could go on about Kim because I asked, does she love her job and she does. You know, and her main thing is she wants to leave on a good note and she wants to be able to spend time with family. And some of her family goes on vacation every year when school starts. She never gets to go. She's so excited that she gets to go this year. So all I can say is she'll be sorely missed as the front, as the front face of our central office. She's been an amazing staple and we really love having her there, so thank you very much. Okay. Next up, I will have our curriculum director, Ms. Kaylee, come on up and she will talk about our next retiree.
My palms are sweaty. I can present to the board no problem, do this, I'm nervous. Because I don't know how you encapsulate 44 years in education in one speech, but I will try my best. Yeah, I guess I need to tell you who we're talking about. Mrs. Del Causo. I know. That's why I'm not looking at her the whole time. Tonight, we honor a truly exceptional educator, one whose heart, dedication, and impact on students cannot be captured in just a few words. Mrs. Mary Beth Del Causo is nothing short of a gem in the world of education. With 44 years in the classroom and an incredible 37 of those spent at Lexington Elementary teaching kindergarten, Mrs. Del Causo has shaped the very foundation of learning for generations of our students. She began teaching in 1980 and from the start, she's brought warmth, wisdom, a little wit, and unwavering dedication to her role. It is rare to encounter a teacher who seems to defy time, someone who continues to thrive and inspire no matter how many years they've spent. and inspire no matter how many years they've served. But that is exactly who Mary Beth is. She brings fresh energy and a deep love for children into her classroom every single day. She sees her students for who they are, each one a unique individual worthy of love, attention, and limitless possibility. She meets them with open arms and open heart and unwavering belief in their potential. There is truly nothing greater we could ask of a teacher. Even after four decades in education, Mrs. Del Causo remains a lifelong learner. She welcomes new ideas, eagerly embraces changes in teaching practice, and continues to hone her craft with the same enthusiasm she had when she first began. That is the mark of an extraordinary educator. Outside the classroom, Mary Beth is just as vibrant. She's a devoted mother to Sarah and John, an avid animal lover with a soft spot for rescues, her newest fur berry Boo is a lucky one, and a proud cat mom many times over. She enjoys the outdoors and is passionate about gardening, which in many ways mirrors the work she's done in her classroom, planting seeds, nurturing growth, and celebrating every blossom. At kindergarten roundup this spring, when we announced that a new kindergarten teacher would be joining us next year, many parents, some of who had once been Mary Beth's own students, pleaded for just one more year with her. Their heartfelt reaction speaks volumes about her legacy. She has touched lives across generations of Marlington and become part of the fabric of Lexington Elementary. Mrs. Del Causo, your legacy is immeasurable. You've left fingerprints on thousands of hearts and your impact will be felt for years to come. Thank you for everything. We wish you a joyful, well-earned retirement filled with love, adventure, and good times with those you hold dear.
As Mary Beth said, "I knew your first year." I said, "Yes." I said, "Wit is a good word for Mary Beth. She's, I think she could keep going." All right. Next up, I'm gonna have Mr. Spondiel, Washington's principal, come up and he's going to speak on his retirement.
Good evening, everyone. We have two retirees at Washington this year, we have three, Mrs. Clark's one of them, but she already had her moment. We have two more retirees that we will miss sorely at Washington. The first one's going to be Mrs. Kathy Mylin. Come on up here, Kathy. Kathy's a librarian at Washington. She's been in the district for thirty-one years. The first fourteen of those years, she spent all at Lexington and then after those first fourteen, she was told that she was going to move and split time between Washington and Lexington. I know Kathy told me that when that happened, all those years ago, she was devastated. Her whole life was spent at Lexington. It's what she knew, it's what she loved. She felt like she was getting yanked out of her comfort zone, but she spent the next seventeen years splitting that time and now she realizes one of the best things that have happened to her. She enjoys it. It's opened new doors and opportunities. She's met so many more students and staff members and friends, so she's really came to love it and enjoys working at both buildings. She not only was librarian for thirty-one years, she also taught STEAM before and after school for three of those years. Asked her about how the job has changed, you know, what was it like when you first got hired? She remembers typing out cards for card catalogs for every book in the library by hand on a typewriter. Kathy had one of the first computers in the building. It worked so well that the kids had to show her how to turn it off and turn it on when that happened. Of course, having one of the first computers meant that she was also the building tech person for a year since she was so adept at technology. One of the biggest changes is her book budget when she first started for the library was $10,000 a year. It's just a hair underneath that now. Books only, not including magazines, audiovisual equipment, supplies, and all those other things. Some of her most memorable and funniest stories, she said she's seen it all in her career. Banana peels used as bookmarks, melted popsicles and bags of students put their snack in there to save it for later. Got a book one time, she went to put away that was wet, she asked student what happened and brother had an accident. That book got thrown away, replacing the $10,000 budget. She's really loved it and spent a great deal of time cultivating the library to make it her own. She's gonna miss the friendships, she's gonna miss the students in the morning running up to her, giving hugs, she's gonna miss students in the community. If you've been in the Washington or Lexington library and you've seen Mrs. Mylin, you know that she has puppets and among those puppets is Mr. Bear, is the most famous of these puppets. The kids love him and they ask about her and one of her best memories is when she sees kids in the community or when they come back to visit her, they ask her if she still has Mrs. Bear, Mr. Bear. And she still does. So if she leaves that when she retires, I'm gonna put that in the archive section of Washington and we're gonna keep that around. Advice Kathy, as you said, any advice for anybody that's coming into the profession? Really good advice. See the humor in everyday and have fun. Easy to get bogged down, you know, in just the everyday grind, but if you can keep laughing and keep smiling, you have a good day. She's done a great job. It's been my honor to get to know her the last four years. She's been flexible, she's done everything I've ever asked her to do. She goes way beyond the call of what a librarian is, helps kids when they need it, and is always there to lend a helping hand in any capacity. We'll miss her. I know she's looking forward to spending time with the grandkids and just enjoying things and we hope she comes back to visit. Good luck. Next up is Robin Caruso.
Hi.
I'm afraid she's gonna hit me. Robin is the head secretary at Washington. She was one of the first people I met when I got the job at Washington and she has left a lasting impression and I will never forget her. She has been in the district for twenty-five years. She started subbing all those years ago, office, cafeteria, latchkey, all those things. She was a latchkey coordinator for fourteen years. She surprised herself because when she got in that position, she never thought she would get to know all the kids and their parents and their names and pretty soon she learned them all. She knew what car they rode in, what they liked to do, had games for them, snacks for them, and just made it a really fun experience. She transitioned over to the head secretary position twelve years ago and has been there ever since. So now she knows every student, every parent, every grandparent, where they live, and a lot more details that you wouldn't think a secretary should know about students, but she does. Robin has worked for six principals during her career, six of them, Mr. Swisher being one of them. I know who her favorite is. I won't say it out loud.
Oh, you?
But I know who her favorite is. Robin said the job has not changed that much over the years. She does a lot of the same things she used to. Obviously, there's been more responsibilities now, but she's always enjoyed the staff and she's always enjoyed what the job has brought. She's got a lot of great memories. She was thrown up once on when she was at Latchkey. That's one of her funniest and most disgusting memories, the same time, but the best part about it is that student came back when she was a senior and invited Mrs. Caruso to her graduation party because she remembered that and was still sorry that happened. So you never know what kind of impacts you're going to make. Also like Mrs. Mylin, she has seen it all. She told me, first year she was subbing when she was in the district, she subbed to the middle school and she heard some students using some improper language and she went and told the office, she was told, "You're gonna have to get used to that a little bit, it happens." She will miss the kids tremendously, the hugs, the office visits, working with the staff. She enjoys laughing with everybody, telling jokes. We can't always repeat the jokes, but she tells jokes. It's always a good time. All the principals, secretaries, custodians that she's worked with, there's been a lot of new faces over the years, but all good memories. She will not miss letting all those people in and out of the door and signing them in on the Raptor system and watching over them. That is one thing she is not going to miss at all. Her advice for everybody is to enjoy every day, especially with the kids, you never know what tomorrow will bring. She's done a fantastic job. She really helped me when I got to Washington, kinda showed me the ropes a little bit and what I needed to expect. She's a foundational piece, one of the rocks to the building. It'll be very different next year without her and seeing her, but I know with her schedule a little more free now and her living thirty-five seconds away from the building, I'm sure we'll see her quite often, at least I hope so. I know she's got a lot of plans to travel, to enjoy all the grandkids, and just take full advantage of life. So God bless her, we miss her and we wish her the best.
Yeah, another two amazing peoples. I looked at Kathy Mylin when I gave her a hug and I said, "I think seventeen years ago was my fault when you had to split buildings." She goes, "It was." And Robin could also say, "Well, you hired me, so that's it." So I did bring her on when Mrs. Kimes decided to partake in her retirement. So it's just an amazing run. Six principals though since then, that's a consistency here. There you are, that's right. Awesome. All right. Next up, we're gonna have Mr. Rizalletti, our middle school principal, come on up and discuss his retirements.
Good evening. We'd like to bring up Cindy Greiner. When we think of school, often our minds go to teachers in the classrooms, books, pencils, now iPads and backpacks. There's plenty of different pictures in our heads. But as far as who actually sees and who knows the inner workings of the school best and then who makes that vision of school actually happen, it's our custodians, our janitors, and our sweepers. I'd like to take a minute to recognize and celebrate Cindy Greiner. She's worked for twenty-four years at Genie and then the last twelve at Marlington as a janitor and a sweeper. Cindy saw everything, from the rooms that were clean and the rooms that weren't, to the writing on the stalls in the bathroom. She makes the learning that happens in the middle school actually happen. Cindy's work ethic, sense of humor, and personality made her appreciated around here. And though we'll miss her, we're excited for Cindy to begin the next chapter of her life. Additionally, she gets to head out with her sister, teacher Angie Hattery, who is also retiring this year. Cindy's been an outstanding worker and a team member and we will be sad to see her go. Congratulations and best of luck to Cindy Greiner.
Thank you, Cindy. I offered her on the way in. She can still stay, we can still rescind tonight. Also told her sister that too, that unfortunately couldn't make it, we might have to embarrass her next month. All right, our final principal that's gonna be coming up to speak on retirement is Mr. Mike Farrell, our high school principal.
All right, so I do have a few individuals that are retiring from the high school. One is with us here tonight, so before I call her up, I would like to at least wish the best of luck to Chris Kogut, Chris Marman, and Steve Miller on their retirement. If Lynn Francis would please join me up front. All right, a lot of places I could start with this and actually on my way up here, as I was walking up here, somebody even whispered to me, "Good luck." Let me start with Lynn's presence is foundational to everything here at Marlington. Everything she does, everything she stands for, her presence alone is just purely foundational for everything we look for. She's the heart and soul, she's a true leader, and she's a mentor to our entire staff. She's the same to our students. Dang it, Lynn.
Sorry.
She leads with her actions, a strong voice and just pure generosity, everything she does. I have a unique perspective of Lynn because I was a student in her class my senior year here at Marlington, 2002. I was a colleague of hers, teaching here at the high school, and now an administrator serving her. So I have a very unique perspective of everything I've seen, all of the impact and influence that she has had on so many different families, kids, generations. It's remarkable. She let me eat lunch in her classroom so that I could take her class my senior year. I didn't have a lunch period. Well, I did, but I wanted to take anatomy. And I remember we had to go to Lynn and ask, "Would it be okay if this student ate lunch in your class?" She didn't even know who it was. She said, "Yeah, absolutely." And I'm come in, let them eat lunch in my room. You forgot about that?
Yeah.
I didn't. And she let me eat lunch in there. And that went a long way with me. That told me, right from the beginning, I knew, I was like, "That was your first year at Marlington?"
It was, yeah.
I just knew, I was like, "All right, I'm gonna like this class, I'm gonna like this teacher." It was awesome. Students love her. It's not a secret. It doesn't matter who you talk to, anybody that went through Marlington, they know her as Fran. That's it, right? It's like the nickname, LeBron, Michael.
I just like LeBron.
Fran. Like, they know her as Fran. She's special. Even those students that get sent to the office by her, they all turn out to love her. And I can think of so many instances over the years, hats is a big one, right? Take your hat off, take your hat off. Had enough. You know what? Farrell, deal with this kid. Here we go. He's wearing his hat every day, doesn't listen. So I would sit down, talk with the students, students push us back a little bit with me and everything. Next thing you know, this student is hugging and high-fiving Fran for the rest of their high school days, just because they see the impact and that she has their best interests at heart. Just a few things that Lynn does and some memories. Number one, nobody wants to organize spirit weeks the way she used to do it. Like, I mean, spirit weeks were always, they were her thing, everybody knew it and it's a lot to live up to now. Every spirit week we have now is like, "No, it's not quite to where Lynn had it," right? Spirit weeks were awesome, continue to be with her. Potlucks for staff, luncheons for staff, organizing things for staff. She understands, like I said, how foundational she is. She understands the importance of culture in our building, in our district, and just rallying people behind one another and getting this stuff to happen. Like, that goes unseen. She does all that. She did all that, she does all that, she's mentoring others to do that when she's gone.
Don't forget about Halloween costumes.
Halloween costumes. Halloween costumes are great. Every year she comes to me, "Can we do Halloween costumes? Can we do Halloween costumes? We'll be good." You won't get a phone call. Can we do them? Yes, love them. Pep rallies. That's Lynn. She's the voice, she organizes, she takes control. Kaden's shaking his head, yes, he knows what I'm talking about. She is in control, she's in command at those pep rallies and I love it. In class, when I was in class, I remember playing Jeopardy. She took the time to put together slides for Jeopardy of all of the content that we did in class. We actually did, we challenged her, I remember this, and we said, "Could we..." We actually did, we challenged her, I remember this, and we said, "Could we do Whose Line Is It Anyway?"
Oh my gosh, we did.
You forgot that one too, didn't you?
Yeah.
You know what that's a sign of? Whose Line Is It Anyway? We did it. She pulled it off. We did it. All the stuff in anatomy, I don't remember what chapter, but we did Whose Line Is It Anyway with. It was such a wonderful memory. All the labs we've done, the dissecting labs we've done specifically. We had some very, just awesome opportunities, unique experiences that I'll never forget, my classmates will never forget, and all of her students will never forget. And who, we can't talk about Lynn without talking about the Anatomy Awards. The Anatomy Awards are coming up here, the last one under Mrs. Francis in a couple weeks. They are pure comedy, these Anatomy Awards. The students come up on stage and they display, they do a project, they display everything they've learned on one topic. But while it's pure comedy, next thing you know, you see how creative the students were because that's what she preached, that's what she emphasized, she wanted them to do that. And then how much they learned. The knowledge is unbelievable, stuff I'm like, "I didn't know that. I didn't know that. I didn't know that." And then going back to the creativity, it's just, it's an awesome experience. Teachers bring their classes down, and it's just, it's excellent, excellent teaching and learning on demonstration right there in the auditorium. And obviously, also, who could forget? My senior year, my year was the first ever Anatomy Awards at Marlington, and Mark Pauli, good friend of mine, I hope you're not watching Mark, but it was the worst project I've ever seen in my life, ever, in my entire life. And he's standing there, but Lynn wouldn't let it go like that. She made him stand right there, said, "Tell us what you know. What did you learn? What are you was?" And she talked him through, she guided him through it. He could have failed right there in that moment, he could have. But she didn't let it happen. She guided him to the answers. He knew the answers, she got him there. And that was just, it was amazing. Never forget that. He won't either, trust me. My own daughter, which I'm blessed to drive here to school, she goes across the street every day, she wrote her a letter the other day. I didn't tell her to do it. She wrote Lynn a letter, and I'm pretty sure it's probably on display in her room. Just remarkable, just because she sees, she knows how special Lynn is, and even talked about how sad she is that she's not going to get her as a teacher. Couple, I'm wrapping up here. Couple things about Lynn. The one thing she emphasizes the most and values the most, I think, is relationships. She and I have had many conversations. She has told me many times, "Kids don't care about what you're teaching them until they know you care about them. If they know you care about them, then they're going to pay attention, they're going to listen, and they're going to do everything you ask." I also, I would be here today in my position where I'm at without the impact Lynn Francis had on me. And it goes far beyond everything I've said here today, but that's a story for another day, because that's a very long story. But I am forever grateful to her and what she means to me and what she did for me. Lynn, we know you'll be around, but we hope you find immense joy and fulfillment in whatever comes next. Congratulations.
And I've had all of their children.
And me. Graduated with Mike. Okay, almost done with presentations. Lenny, I call her Lenny, not Fran, it's just kind of growing on me on that. Every retirement today, if you heard them speak about the retire, they're talking about how they treated people. At the end of the day, we can't emphasize that enough. We pride ourselves on in Marlington, it's really about relationships. That's really what it boils down to. You take it from our bus drivers that build relationships every day to the people that greet you at the front door, or the parents, to the cafeteria people that are in there serving food, to our students so they have the ability to learn just as much, the teachers themselves that build and talk about it. You can't do one without the other. You probably heard that loud and clear today. So I just, I can't say enough about how well this district does when it comes to building relationships. Are we perfect? No. But damn, we do a pretty good job. So I thank you. Our last latecomer, I'm going to embarrass her just for a minute. As I said earlier, I said, "I'm going to find my son's bus driver tomorrow and get her." But she did show up, so we appreciate it. So we do have a 20-year here that came, so we just want to congratulate our 20-year, Mrs. Joyce Steiger. Come on up. Okay. We are going to do a brief five-minute pause, so this, before we start the formal part of the meeting. So this would be your time, unless you wish to sit for the formal meeting, this would be a good time to exit. Mr. Davis, if you could pause.
Okay, hi, Ryan.
How's it going?
Hi, Ryan. How are you? Thanks for joining us.
Board?
Yeah, sorry for the delay here.
I'm sorry.
I think we're ready to discuss a few things.
All right, so we have Ryan Kazini, our, Gazoni, I'm sorry, I apologize. To discuss any, Tuesday night, we had a work session discussing the five-year forecast. Before, typically, we do the, by May, by law, we have to have the approval from the board, and this is not the time we're going to approve, but we always bring Ryan back for any additional questions the board may have had since Tuesday. So I just didn't know if the board had any questions for Ryan at this time, since he's been patiently waiting for us.
I think we answered most of them.
The work session.
At the work session on Tuesday. Thank you, Ryan. See her?
Ryan, if you'd like, you can give any highlights that you discussed on Tuesday, but if you would like.
Yeah, I mean, the thing I would say is the district is looking to have a balanced budget next year. Was close to having a balanced budget this year, and really no reason to nod, was the transfers that the district had into the capital improvement fund came a little bit higher than expected because you guys got your pipeline settlement, and then you also had severances that you have to set aside the funds into the severance fund retirements that are coming next year. You're going to experience the savings from those retirees next year, which you're paying to severance this year. So in some ways, a part of your deficit spend this year is being offset by the savings for next year. The good news is, is the district has anticipated having an operating surplus next year before going into operating deficit again in 2027. Part of the difficult thing that I expressed last time we talked is there is a lot of different legislation out there in regards to property taxes, property values, how reappraisal works. There's also some, we have a governor's proposal as well as the House proposal. This is based on the House proposal, which has a 2025 guarantee, meaning in state funding terms, you can't get less than 2025. And that's better for the district currently than what the governor's budget looks like, which has a 10, a 5% to 10% reduction in guarantee in '26 and '27. The House version also has a cap on the cash balance that a district can carry, cannot exceed 30% or there'd be ramifications on your taxes collected following tax year. That does not apparently apply to the district, so that one was not something to apparently worry about. We'll know more when the Senate releases their budget, and then ultimately, it'll go to a conference committee where all three parts of the legislative body will agree on a budget, hopefully being placed before July 1st. In comparison to November, revenue came in extremely close, as well as the expenses. The district, the district does have some additional retirements that we mentioned that they are not going to be replacing and some other budget reductions. So as a result, revenue was up slightly due to property taxes included in the pipeline coming a little higher. On each year, the forecast, that is up slightly. Overall, your state aid is about the same. You were down a little bit this year, and then you are down in revenue moving forward. Some of that is tuition, just less out of district students placed that you get funding for foster students and court placed. But on the expense side, the district has made some additional cuts. You can see here in salary benefits, you're down about half a million. So that is a good thing regarding '26. I think it's a little bit, changed a little bit in the move forward, but you do have savings built in basically each year of the forecast in comparison to where you were in November. So going in the right direction as of right now. A lot of districts not have a lot of uncertainty going off what's going on with state funding, while it will impact you a little bit. The good news is, is it's not a dramatic effect either way, but we've seen both the House and the Senate as far as creating a sense of instability for the district. So you do have some deficit spending as you get out in the outer years. Once again, starting in 2027, you'll start to want to pay attention to that, but there is still time, plan moving forward to address that, depending what happens with state funding, property taxes, the economy, and everything else.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Ryan, you explained something about 2026. There was a, you were flipping back and forth between some sort of expense or, because on the line where it's on line 6.010, it's 5413. Can you explain that again?
I believe you said line 6.010?
Yeah. You explained it on Tuesday, why are our charts not matching up with what you have up there?
So yeah, this reflects the actual forecast. I show you the simplified forecast, and so you can see here is line 6.01, and it looks like your operating deficit is, your surplus is not as large in '26, and it's larger deficit as you go out. And the reason is, is this is the prescribed format from the state that your forecast looks like, and your renewal levies sit down here. So the reason why I like to show this one here is because it brings the renewal levies up here to show you.
Okay.
Seeing those renewal levies pass.
Right.
What's your actual operating deficit or surplus looks like.
Okay.
But in total, your cash balance will match, just where I'm showing these renewal levies.
Okay, yep. I understand. Thanks.
Think we're okay to let Ryan go then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Ryan.
Hey, good night and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Ryan, thank you for your patience and your time tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it a lot.
In vacation, Mr. Foss?
Okay. Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you that we can be here tonight. We thank you for this fine community that we are members of, and all the students that we have as a group, the opportunity to direct and help and teach and just enrich their lives so that they'll be better citizens too. And we pray that you'll give the board wisdom, that you'll protect this school and protect them as they seek. them as they seek your wisdom in all things. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, good evening. This is May 8th, 2025, and I will be giving my update for the month of May. Again, I stick with, you know, what are we going to talk about? Some reasons to celebrate right now and then basically what is going on in our district. So we have something, we have lots to celebrate this time of year, just chose a couple of things to discuss. So obviously, if you've not heard, we have had, the Stark County has what they consider a teacher of the year and a rookie of the year. So every Stark County school chooses a teacher and chooses a rookie. So our teacher of the year this year was Kelly Lapinga. She's our seventh grade English Language Arts teacher and she is housed at Marlington Middle School. So we had a nice dinner with her and her husband. They had to do like a county dinner. That was last week over at Kent State Stark and they get to honor our teacher of the year and our rookie of the year. And our rookie of the year is Juliana Lindenberger and she is one of our school psychologists. So we have two and she does an amazing job. There's her and Becca Ryan, that basically oversee all students when it comes to students with disabilities or students that may possibly potentially have a disability or students that are gifted or have behavior issues. These are the people that you're going to go to that have to do some type of evaluation with that. So she's been with us, rookie of the year, kind of guidelines you have to be within your first three years of your career is where you're, was where you're looking at it. So congratulations to both of those. All right, so we did the high school students of the month and it kind of gets bogged down. So I, we, we made a little change in our format, but we do have our elementary and middle school students of the month. So I unfortunately was absent in April, so I will bring up our April and May. So at Lexington, we had our April student of the month, our fifth grade Quanis student of the month was Andrew Bell. And our May student of the month was Bailey Bryant. So we do want to congratulate both of them and I know inside the school, they do specific awards to congratulate each of those students. At Marlboro Elementary, the April student of the month was Sydney Snellbaker, hope can I say that correctly? And in May was Lucia Lamb. I think those should be both in order on that. We'd like to congratulate both the Marlboro Quanis fifth grade students of the month. And at Washington's Quanis fifth grade students of the month, we have Sawyer Flaut and we have Peyton Bueller. So congratulations to both those fine people. So those are our three elementaries and our three, or I guess six, fifth grade Quanis students of the month. For the middle school then in the month of May, we have two, two fine young people for each month. So at April, we had Carter McGrady there on the left for the April student of the month and Isabella Ritchie. So, and in May, we have on the left, we have Chloe Evenich and then next to that is Landon Wilcox. I know that Mr. Rizaletti also, like the elementary principals, all do something within their buildings to kind of congratulate them on being our students of the month. So thank you. What else has been going on in the last, so we had our high school musical. If you didn't make it out, the musical was amazing. It was Grease, an absolutely phenomenal performance. We had great crowds every single night. Opening night was Thursday and it went Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So if you, you know, I urge you every year, we typically keep our play at the same time every year, which is March. So kind of, you know, we do talk about it in advance. We try to put it out there as much as possible, but our students do an amazing job and Mr. Montney does an amazing job, Mr. Pendergrass, I mean, we just have a great group and then we have teachers that just step up and spend multiple evenings here every night being prepared for this play. So here's some more pictures from the play. Okay, a robotics team. So I don't, making sure you guys know, we have a robotics team, but we do. We, our robotics team does fairly well. So this is with Mr. Denny. He competed in the National Robotics in April, all right? They competed in six events against 500 different robots. They placed in the top three in four events. They actually won robot hockey. They also won the Honda Innovation Award for the sumo robot. So out of those events, that's where they're at and then they placed in others. So the kids take a lot of pride in putting together these robots throughout the year before they go and actually perform or compete, I guess. I don't want to say perform, I want to say compete. So congratulations to our robotics team. More reasons to celebrate. So we do, we kind of house in our office, the Burdine Folk Scholarship and it, when I say three years ago, we had three applicants. And they, and the committee kind of said, hey, you're obviously not doing a good job advertising the purpose and the meaning behind this scholarship. So we kind of been pushing it. Last year, we had 32, this year we had 43. So those four, we had actually had 45. Two of them, just due to incomplete applications could not, we could not, the committee is very stringent on that. But they did give out over $65,000, $65,000 plus in scholarships awarded just to those 43 applicants. So that's a, it's just, it's just amazing. And then just the, this, this week, it's been a long week. So we had the Marlington Alumni Association Scholarship Banquet Dinner and they just, you can't say enough about what our alumni does from an association, from where they started to where they're at now. So that night, there were 68 scholarships given out to 55 different students in the total amount of $152,150. So it's, it was a, it was a nice evening at Hartville Kitchen, but again, you're, and these are just from the Alumni Association and the folk. We haven't even gotten to what students would get from additional scholarships that we will be made aware of soon and to as much as what the colleges give these students, you know, based on their merit or academic merit or volunteer merit or you name it when it comes to where they apply. So, thank you. Where we're at right now, so I just want to kind of, I can get more, I'm going to get a little bit more into it with questions that the board may have in June or July, but I kind of wanted to kind of give you an idea when, you know, they, they mentioned the night, it's a five-year forecast, why, why we're able to, if you, if you listen to Ryan, where we've been back, you know, this is year three for me. So I came in on in the summer of '22, '23, at the end of the school year, was roughly about June, a little before June. You know, and myself, we, we have not replaced 14 staff members that year. We talked about that for the salary and benefits for that year was about $1.2 million. Last year, as I presented, we went through, there was about four staff members. We did not replace for salary and benefit savings purposes was about $408,000. This year, currently where I'm at today, which it could grow, I'm at six staff members I have, that we are not replacing and we're at about $550,000. So in total, right now, as of today or tonight, there's been 24 staff members in this district that, that I have not recommended for replacement and the board has been, has been, has been okay with that and for a salary and benefit savings of about $2.2 million. Now, obviously, two point, it doesn't exactly work like you think, like $2.2 million just comes off your budget. No, you obviously have inflation, you have inflationary costs, you have purchase service costs, you have raises that go into it when you guys approve the three-year contracts. All those things come into play, but we wouldn't be able to do those things. Maybe not, maybe give the staffs the raises they deserve or be able to get the buses we can do without being able to kind of take a good look at our staffing and purchase services every year. This is just staffing. You know, and when he talked about looking at it from a budgetary plan, I mean, from a, we saved $549,000 in staffing this year and that could grow. We're still looking at purchase services right now. We asked our entire department for everybody to take a 10% cut and what does that look like? You know, I can give an example that our tech department wasn't really pleased with us when we told them, can you, we're going to cut $150,000 from this year. And that's not included in the net figure. That's just the staffing and that figure. But be clear that sometimes people, we hear the, the community says that, you know, where are you at? And I always smile and say, we're okay. Because you know what? That's, that's our job, mom and I's job, and then to give you the best recommendations to continue to steer the ship in the right, right direction, to keep moving us forward. But, and I, so we've done a nice job. So I just want to give you, and I can, if there's more specific questions the board has about those, I can answer those in detail. The other thing this board has done, based on recommendations in the last three years that I want to talk about, is how we've improved the district. Mr. Hagan and I had this conversation probably over a year ago. Talked about maybe a way to track on a sheet indirectly, kind of how to, to show what we've done, again, from the summer that I came on to each summer, kind of, and this is more of the larger capital improvements. This isn't your day-to-day operations, your cleaning, the supplies that we purchased, the, the things that go on in the building, from the waxing of the floors to the painting to all, all of that is still a capital improvement. But I'm talking about what the board and I have sat and discussed each year when we talk about what we can do. So if you, if I scroll down to the bottom, like I had this lined up in three and I'm not going to harp you through it and it's, you know, you're looking at in 2023, $1.5 million roughly. And last summer was 1.8. This summer coming up, we're looking at spending $3.2 million. Yes. Any, I can say, any large capital project will be on there. So what I'm going to do is, is we're going to, my goal is ultimately to have this document linked up. It'll be on, obviously, on our board docs when it's done, but also have it linked on our website when we're talking about capital improvements, just to show that, you know, what, you know, where kind of, where we've gone as a district and the things that we can, the board continues to say, hey, we need to take a good look at and know that we've been, we're trying to take care of our district, all five buildings, plus our HORT building, plus our Mall and Center, you know, plus the, you know, we really have seven buildings in this district. You count the transportation shed, that's eight. These, these projects add up. Now, obviously, four million of that is going to be probably close to that high school roof, which will be complete. But you're still talking almost another $2.6 million in projects. I really want to thank the board for, you know, if we, taking a good look, allowing us to take a good look at needs and then kind of trying to address those needs in a periodic manner. And then what we're going to do is try to stay up on those needs, as I said. So I told you, take three to five years, I think, to get us caught up and then we are able to maintain. But I wanted to share some figures with you from that, that end of it. Okay. This question comes up. So I was asked to address it. Talk about pure pupil spending. Boy. We get, oh, go back. Basically, we get told we're roughly spending. Hold on, let me go back here real quick. We're roughly spending about Marlington local schools. So I kind of did a breakdown of a couple of different ways. People say, you guys spend a lot. So our breakdown for per, total per pupil spending, that's on the left, is $15,471.55. Somebody says, well, that's, you know, Marlington spends a lot per pupil. So I had to think about that because that's a very vague statement. It's very easy to say, very publicly known. So I dug into the CUP report, then I dug in, you know, different things, so I made sure that I had accurate data. Then I went to the pure, the county and had somebody do my number. So on the county side, the county spends per pupil as an average, just Stark County. Talking about 17 districts, $16,281.3. So were you on par with the county? Yes. But when you talk about instructional support, you got to look at, why are we at $15,000 and maybe a neighboring district might be at 14 or 13? So from an instructional standpoint, on the left, we spend $7,959.21 on actual instruction of students. Now, I can actually, if you'd like to the board, I'll give you a breakdown of all 17 districts and show you where we do from just instruction. We are not, we're probably, you know, if you look at the county average, they actually spend quite a bit more, $8,316. Where we get, so I guess pure people, where we're taking a larger chunk is, is we spend a lot of money on our buildings where districts don't, at least in the county. So right now, we spend about $4,202.26 per pupil on building operations, where the county average is 3,000.
Does that include the improvement?
Any money you spend on buildings. So basically, the Stark County saying, hey, you know, we, we are currently spending more money on per, per pupil on that, which is fine. I just wanted to give you.
Overall budget.
Yes, per pupil. So then you look at administrative, support comes in there. So what you spend on administrative per pupil. And then you look at staff support per pupil. So, and I had a question and it was, you know, so I had to dig a little deeper. I wanted to kind of know, like, what's staff support? So staff support expenditure per pupil covers expenditures associated with provisional support services to a school district, including training and professional development. I didn't know that answer. I had to ask, what, where does that come from? I asked what pupil support was. Pupil support expenditure covers expenditures associated with non-instructional services to students, such as counseling and health services. So this all comes, this is all, this is not secretive data. This is all data that you can look up online. It's just hard to piece it together.
What category does transportation fall? Staff, pupil support?
Pupil support.
Where does transportation fall?
So building operational is building, maintenance, utilities and operations. Obviously, instructional covers associated with teaching, student instruction, does not include central office. I can't, it does not say in here exactly where transportation, I'm going to say it's going to fall in either building or instructional. Depends, you know, if you're talking salaries, it's going to fall probably somewhere in the instructional side of things, but I don't know. I'll get that answer. Good question. I just, I guess I just, I've had people ask me the question, you know, and so I just thought I, it's a little bit, you got to get a little bit more into it than just saying, hey, you spend $15,000 per student. Well, they, that sounds great.
No, it looks like we spend about 8,000 students.
Correct, so.
On instruction, which is our primary responsibility.
So when you look at this.
Owning buildings and being a good tenant and.
So from a state average, if you just want to do the state of Ohio, the state of Ohio is $16,281, $281.3 and instructionally, the state of Ohio average, just the state, is $9,254.48. We are significantly less than the average in the state. So it's, and that's really just right now where we're at. But I just wanted to kind of, it's, I just think it's a good thing to dig into just a little bit, to have a little bit better understanding of where, people say, you know, you're saying, hey, you're spending X, X dollars, but where are those X dollars are? So I just, that was a quick touch and I, and I'm going to try to touch on data a lot more and get into it and tell you exactly where I'm getting the data from, because it's all publicly known as it's released out, you know, so you have it. The last one I'm going to touch on here is our tax rate. You know, we, we hear, obviously, with property taxes and values and how things are taxed and so forth, and this is just from 2024. So it doesn't even, this will soon change as a reflected tax rate. But, all right, so this came from the Ohio Department of Taxation and, you know, people say, you know, they don't like to hear it in Marlington, but they are the lowest taxed. We don't overspend, we don't over-ask for money. We have not asked for money in 20-some years or past new money. But when you, but I guess when you put it up on a chart, you want to be clear, are you saying that or you're not? So that, so I just kind of had the Ohio Department of Taxation take a good look, you know, and this is where we're, this is, and this is as of 2024. So soon, I'll be able to have 2025, be reflective a little bit more. That's, that graph's not going to change much. It's actually going to grow a little bit wider. But it's, and the reason this tax rate comes into effect, because you talk about, you talk about originally, if you remember, two months ago in March, when the legislators came out with their, the buy-in and budget came out in House Bill 96, and I told you, I said, hey, right now, currently, I see, I think I showed a slide where we were losing like 500,000 dollars a year, and we had to try to find a way to offset this. Well, the House, it went back to the House, it went back to the, the representatives, they came out with a different way to, they came out with a different version. And then it sat in the Senate, and the Senate's different version. So where it's at in a nutshell, I kind of highlighted Marlington. You know, we're really what I would call, what, in a best-case scenario, we're not getting anything big and we're not losing money. Now, this isn't voted, this is hypothetical. But right now, the hypothetical, as Ryan said, this is a, this is not a bad scenario for Marlington Local Schools. Now, if you go in the far right-hand corner, the, the new thing that is the Senate and the House are looking at is they're basically saying, if you have an ending balance, a cash balance of more than 30%, we're going to look at a way to take that back to the property. They, they feel that 30% is enough of a carryover, you don't need more. Trying to say it in the right way. So how that would look would be, they would, they would go back to the auditor of that county, so let's just say this is Stark County, and they would tell, Alan Harrell isn't there anymore, I think it's Angela, somebody, and tell her, hey, you need to go back and look at the effective millage and how to tax it more appropriately. So the, that's not going to be Marlington's issue, because we have always significantly stayed at 30% or under, even in our current, this is, that 7 million dollar ending cash balance was from our November forecast. Our new, current forecast is going to be roughly around 6 million dollars, so we're going to be about 25%. Uh, so it's not one where, you know, this is, to me, I, I mean, I know it's, compared to what originally came out two months ago, this is a really good scenario for Marlington. Even though we're not, it's essentially gaining, we're not taking a-
Not losing anything.
We're not losing anything either, so we're continuing to find ways to meet the needs of our kids, at the same time, meet the needs of our buildings. So I did, I just kind of, and I sent this to you, the board too, but I just kind of wanted to highlight, there are other districts, if you look, they have carryovers in somewhere of 70%, 50%, you know, and so forth, so they're-
They get, they're going to get penalized for having more than 30%.
So I did spend, as I-
If they were frugal and had more money, they're-
So that's, that's the, the question is this, they said back in 2007, when there was the first massive cut from K-6 about, and they cut about 5% of the budgets, they basically said, listen, you guys should save for a rainy day. I guess that was the way I've heard it, you know? So boards decided that if the taxpayers choose to fund a levy of any kind, operational, bond, whatever, and obviously, if you're good stewards of your money, then you would be able to save that money and have it any cash balance. Well, now they're saying that that, boards that are being good stewards of their money and saving their money-
Well, you don't need the money, because you have the money.
Yeah, you don't need it. So we're going to take it back, is what they're kind of saying. Now, I, I don't see that, they're giving options for districts to do things prior to that, so that, but that's all still yet to be finalized. So that's kind of the looming question out there that's sitting, um, right now. Even when I went down to Columbus last week, like I said, it's sitting in the Senate, the Senate's going to pump it back to the House, and they're going to have to come up with a version and then come back and meet in the middle. So it's-
It looks like most of the districts are over 30%.
Correct.
When they're talking about doing a property tax rollback, so it won't even affect this year, it'll affect next year.
They did dismiss the, the old rollback, so they're only going to look moving forward.
Oh, they did decide to take it out?
Yes, yes. So it, I'll give you a, a real simple example, Josh. You look at those carryovers, and our neighbor next to Minerva is Brown Mokel, or Malvern. Theirs is 105%.
Now, does it matter how much over 30% they are? The, does that change?
No, well, they haven't, that's where they're landing on 30, they may go to 35, they may, you know, the reason why they originally started at 25% and they got a lot of pushback from the superintendents and the, and the treasurer association was, if you choose to go for a bond for anything, you have to have a minimum of a 25% carryover to get a triple A rating, to get the best interest rate. So that, or, so that's why they raised it to 30.
At least they stuck at 25%.
That's, that's the only reason why they chose to bump it to 30.
It's challenging too, I think, or it'll challenge a lot of school districts, because there's another factor, which is the cash. And in the early part of the year, especially like the, usually January, February timeframe, the cash balance at districts, just with the schedule of when property taxes are collected by the district, that, uh, cash gets pretty low. And if you don't allow a larger carryover, um, if that gets scrunched, so to speak, um, there'll be some districts, more districts will be borrowing money in the early part of the year, just to make it through the year, even though they'll get collections later in the spring.
Now, is that a general?
For some hard-
Is that just for school districts, or is it applied to local governments and-
As far as I know, they have not applied it to the local governments, they also did not apply it to career tech institutions. So like an R D, Drake-
Specifically the schools.
Specifically schools. So the best I could, the best thing I could do, which I said I'm, I've, I've not really, I never thought I'd see myself more as a politician, but I've, I've spent more time in Columbus, or at least having people come see us in small groups as superintendents, just trying to tell our story. Because they miss Marlington's out there, because they look, what they see is larger districts in the state of Ohio with large amounts of carryover, and they're not paying attention to the conservative districts that have taken time and done things right, been frugal with their money, don't carry a large carryover, you know, still taking care of their buildings, and it just gets overlooked. So the best thing that I've been told is just to try to get out there and tell our story, so they understand when they go sit and talk and lobby, or when senators or our, let our, our local representatives go talk, they have something to bring back to the table, you know, to the people that actually make the final decisions. But, so this is still hypothetical. This would not be a bad hypothetical for us. So we'll maybe have a little bit better information come June or July meeting. So I just wanted to kind of give you a nutshell on that, and then obviously, we talked to you a little bit about the tax rate, where we're at, and I just wanted to, you know, should be, be proud. So moving, going in the next couple, uh, next, for us at least, for the 2025, '26 school year, we're just going to continue to look at our staffing as they come in and purchase services, you know, we're just going to see where we're at. And we're getting to the point where we're here, it's closing out the year, we have 19 days of school left. So that's kind of going to be a, a big push for us right now, and obviously, if you, you guys understand, our fiscal year ends on June 30th, so we have a, we have a lot to do to get through the end of the year. Any questions for me right now? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And thank you for going to Columbus and spending so much time with the legislators. I know you've worked really hard on, uh, conveying our concerns, and we appreciate it.
All right.
Public participation, did anyone sign up?
Yes, yeah, one person turned in a sheet to address the board, Mr. Don Carter. And you all have three minutes to present to the board. Mr. Carter.
You don't have to look at it, but if you would question my comments, you can certainly look at it.
I know you well.
Mr. Carter, you can step up the microphone.
Oh, okay. Don Carter, retired family physician, team physician for Alliance for 35 years, and I've been retired for 10 or 20 years, 20 years probably now. Just as I was retiring, a Alliance, uh, girl, long-distance runner, was coming home on junk with her earbuds in, and she stepped in front of a car driven by a school teacher who was her neighbor, more or less, and was killed. Uh, the worst day for Alliance schools would have been the next day, because it was in the evening. Um, and my thoughts, now I was talking to my neighbor Ken, um, no, if that girl was in, it was during track season and practice, the school could be held accountable. So my suggestion is that none of the students wear two earbuds, and that they stick to no more than two students-wide running, uh, because silly things happen, and as a taxpayer, I don't want to be accountable for any of those costs, but as a resident, I don't want to see anybody get hurt. Any questions? Any, anybody remember that?
I do.
Okay, three of you do. What's it be about, 25 years ago?
At least.
Thank you.
A little less. Did Dr. Carter have, the church? Yeah. A little.
He grew up.
Old business, Mr. Carter.
Go ahead. Old business. Uh, this is B, our, I recommend the board approve the following resolutions from the special update from March 2025, which is for policies on student supervision and welfare.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
These were just Ed Holland's legal changes on basically how adults supervise our, our students.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Okay, new business. We have seven items of new business tonight. Uh, the first item, number one, is recommend the motion to approve the following student lunch prices for the 2025, 2026 school year as presented in Exhibit A.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
These lunch rates from our previous year have gone up a quarter.
I have a question on how the reimbursements work, so can you just entertain this for me? When you're denied a free lunch or reduced, we still get 42 cents reimbursed? Is that-
Correct.
All right, so if a student pays the full freight, we still get money reimbursed?
Correct. And we don't control that, that's strictly controlled by the, from the government?
No, which is scary.
And no more free lunches for everyone?
That would be correct.
Free lunch is done.
The saying, isn't it? No more free lunches.
There's a saying.
There's no such thing as a free lunch.
No, you know, yeah. Okay, call the roll, please.
There was.
There was.
For one year, two years.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Item number two, I recommend the motion to approve the 2025 graduation class of the following student list as shown in Exhibit B.
So moved.
Second.
Any students have it?
There's 160 students in this class. Last year, I think we were at 164, to be exact.
The class of 1992 had 225 members in this class.
Enrollment has decreased.
Yeah, when I graduate- Giving you a historic perspective.
268 for my-
My, uh-
We have declined.
My seventh grader will graduate in 2030, and her class is about 110.
So we're hitting a rebound.
What grade is she in now?
She's in seventh right now.
Seventh grade.
2030.
All right, we're all in the same, we're all in seventh grade.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Third item, recommend the motion to approve the Stark County Health Department contract as shown in Exhibit C.
So moved. Second.
Question?
Last year, our nurse for five days a week in all our buildings was at a cost of 58,695 dollars. Currently, in this contract, it is 62,790 dollars. So the difference between last year and this year is 4,095 dollars.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Fourth item, recommend the motion to approve the student handbook, the athletic handbook, and the Duke's Digital Handbook for 2025, '26 as shown in Exhibit D, E, and F.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just our three handbooks that you guys approve every year. Um, they are still considered in drafts, so if you did open them and all looked, there were just minor changes that would follow name changes, tweaks, nothing that came across as.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Fifth item, recommend the motion to approve school fees for the 2025, 2026 school year as shown in Exhibit G.
So moved.
Second.
Question?
So from last year's school fees to this year, so the changes on there are, under world language, that went from $10 to $15. And we do have a new fee this year, uh, other than that, all other fees are the same, and then we do have a new fee this year for health, that's because of the CPR side of things, and that's $17.
Hey, I thought they paid for that.
I don't know, I'm just presenting what was given.
No, I mean, wasn't the state giving us, didn't they-
They're not.
They were requiring us to teach CPR.
It is required.
They were supposed to give us money for it, and now we have to charge our students for it?
It's called a, in a very fun, unfunded meeting.
Well, bait and switch?
Man, these guys are good. Can't believe they keep getting re-elected.
Or bad, okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Item number six, recommend the motion to approve the following amendment to the Marlington Education Association contract as shown in Exhibit H.
So moved.
Second.
And, question?
This is, uh, due to S T R S about two weeks ago, changed the retirement rule from 33 years to 32 years. So our negotiated agreement requires a deadline of letting us know by December 31st of the year retirement, which that year, that has passed, so that gives the door to allow, uh, any teacher, if they choose to retire now, they can still do that based on how the contract reads, and we allowed it to go through for next year also, because we have some people that just weren't, they caught them off guard. I mean, they threw them in financially, just kind of just disarray to be able, from their family.
Great, thanks. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
This is not to be voted on. Number seven, this is a recommend the board to review the following board policy as first read as shown in Exhibit I. Uh, this is a first read, it would go in effect next month if you approve it. All this is, is changing our kindergarten entrance date. It was August 1st, we are, it was been recommended, Mrs. Kaylee and I had a large discussion about this, uh, since we, uh, start after Labor Day, uh, we would prefer to have our end date cutoff be September 1st.
That to give the parents more time?
It does, and we've had, every year, we seem to have many questions from parents that have, like, a student that has an August 5th birthday, or an August 6th birthday, and they, then they have to go through the appeal process, and then they have to go through the, technically, in our policy, the acceleration process. So you could have a very average kid ready to go to kindergarten, that's five years old, that cannot go to kindergarten, because they're not considered what we would consider based on our policy gifted, and it all boils down to a date. So, uh, we kind of went back and forth, so it's like-
It's got to be some cutoff.
It does, so some schools are September 1st, others are August 1st, that's typically, you could find schools on both sides. Uh, Ms. Kaylee asked, would this be that difficult to go to a September 1st, since we always start after Labor Day? I said, no, it's a policy change, but the board has to discuss it and make a decision. Uh, Ms. Kaylee asked, would this be that difficult to go to a September 1st since we always start after Labor Day? I said, no, it's a policy change, but the board has to discuss it and make a decision. So this is just a first read. Think about it. If you've got concerns, questions, in the next month or so, please reach out to Ms. Kaylee or myself. We'll happily entertain. Bye. And that is all I have for new business. We are on to the treasurer's agenda.
Item number one, minutes. I'd like to recommend that the board approve the minutes from the regular meeting on April 8th, 2025. So moved. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Item number two, I'd like to recommend that the board approve the financial reports for April 2025 as presented. So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Like to hit a couple highlights for you. We ended April with a cash balance in the general fund of $11.2 million. If you look at the financial summary report, if you scroll down to Fund 070, that's the Capital Projects Fund, I'd like to point a couple things out with that. The cash balance in that at the end of April was $437,163.76. If you look at the rightmost column, you'll see a negative amount of about $2.6 million. That's due to having like the purchase order in place for the roof in particular and a couple of the, the projects. So that negative amount will be one thing that will go away with the, a transfer of the pipeline money that will be, you know, following the resolution here. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
On that, uh, penalty, the 30% penalty, if we were to not transfer the money out from NEXUS, would we get hit with that by having our, that money, if that money stayed in the general fund?
Uh, well, it depends. Currently, if they keep it at 30%, we haven't really put in 30, the pipeline money into the, into the equation, so, but having the 070, and obviously, when he, when he talked about, Ryan talked about the $350,000 we transferred out, which is technically still in a different account, the 03, we call it the 035 account, which also does not show up on the forecast. Those are things that, yeah, if they were in the, I guess, one gen, general pot, could have, could push us over 30% then, which would affect state rate.
Wouldn't it make sense for the schools to establish another fund that?
I would, I would say if you watched, if you had a chance to observe 16 board meetings this month in Stark County, you will find resolutions.
Money's moving.
070 or 035.
Yeah, like the one of the.
Everybody's moving.
Like I thought a good, interesting example of that was.
Or they'll move it for you.
One of the districts that Dan mentioned or was on his chart there had a very large carryover balance, and in hearing their story, one reason they did was because they were essentially saving money for a large construction project.
So they need to establish.
In their general fund.
Move it into there instead of.
Whereas we have that 070 fund established for capital projects, it keeps our balance lower if they're looking at just the forecast and just the general fund. So related to that 30%, we're, we're already doing things right, which is helpful. Some districts right now are scrambling to, to account more the way we are.
Bob and I went to a meeting with the county treasurers and soup's and just basically the moving money into PI, which you have every right to, which we have done, is not recommended because once it goes into PI, it cannot be reversed. So from an 070 or an 035, you had, the board has flexibility as a group to make decisions based on how your forecast ranges on any given six-month period. Uh, do you need to bring money in or out depending on how that is? So yes, they'll be setting it. I would say 16 other districts will be having.
There's always loopholes.
So, so this is the aud, is it the county auditor that's monitoring this?
Maybe it should run for state rep job.
State auditor.
So the state, the state gets all the same information our county auditors get, so the state sees this.
Who's enforcing that? The state?
So the state will make, once they pass the budget bill, and the Senate and the House pass it, then that will become law.
So this, this 070 that was established, we, we use that, that back in 18 or 19, we did that?
Yeah, so they basically, the recommend, the recommendation for an 070 account is basically for roughly about 10 years. And want to be specific about what it's used for, which we were, which was.
So we're in compliance that, you know, they, the state recognizes that's legitimate.
We're 100% in compliance.
Unless they change the legislation.
Yes.
Right.
Including that now.
We are, we are, we are currently, Bob and I kind of just looked at each other and said, we're not having to come to the meeting tonight and say, hey, we have to establish things because we're at 31 or 32 or even 40, you know, we're, we're where we're at.
But even, even though we established that, unlike the PI, once it's in, you said, you can't pull it out.
You can.
But in this, we can, as we've been doing.
The board could if, if there was a need, if you, if you were at some fiscal point that the state came in and said, hey, you would, this is, then the state would make that recommendation also, but that's not where we're at. We've been, uh, honoring that closely.
Okay. Okay, interesting. Any questions with any of the other financial reports? Check register?
I was actually going to ask why some of the similar-sized districts to us had a, almost double the cash balance that we did, but they probably don't have that fund that we do.
Well, and here's.
Or they probably will now.
And here's another example, is, as you know, that over the few, last few years, interest rates were at a point where we were receiving, the more money you had, you put aside, you had in your cash balance, you could, you collecting that interest. We were getting interest income too. So there are treasurers out there that said it was actually cheaper to borrow money to build anything than it was to actually spend their cash because they collected more money off the interest, and that interest then paid off the borrowed money. So they would actually go and ask for money to borrow because it worked out better in the long run, and that's another.
Oh, yeah, just, just like in our case of paying off the current, um, loan for the grade schools, if we would have made advanced payments, what's the interest rate on that?
I don't remember.
Like less than a percent?
It's like one.
Whereas our interest in our accounts is higher than that.
Correct.
It, it would be, we'd be wasting money paying it down.
Same principle.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay. Item number three. Um, appropriation revisions. I'd like to recommend that the board approve the budget and revenue revisions as presented.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Okay, if you look at the first page of the revisions, the revenue revisions, you'll see, um, a negative number of about 3.2 million coming out of the general fund, which is the pipeline money essentially, and you'll see that then coming down into the 070 fund. Um, just to show that that money will be available after the transfer here. Also have a $40,299 amount that is also related to transfer, uh, to restore our severance fund. Uh, I've been trying to keep $150,000 in that fund. Last year, we exceeded that quite a bit, which was some of what Ryan touched about, the forecast coming in with the larger deficit this year. Uh, some is related to that, that it was a larger number of retirements.
And that's going to continue. We're going to be transferring out a little bit more. Like Bob said in the past, it's been about 100, 125,000 as a typical transfer out in the 035 account, which, but if, when we, when we're looking at long-term planning, which I like to do when I look at our staff, we kind of, I kind of look at next year, how many retirements, the neck, the following year, so we kind of try to anticipate what to transfer out so we're not caught off guard. Because last thing you want to be off is $200,000 immediately in your budget, so we kind of try to look for that.
Yeah, and it's something that's not easy to estimate, even if you know some people retire until you see how many years they have or what their salary was, because some have banked up a lot of sick leave, for example, which they get a quarter of. So you just, it's, it's not something to be precise about.
Well, now it has changed with STRS too.
Yeah.
That's another thing to throw into the mix.
Right, like we just have two more coming that we weren't expecting.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Item number four, I recommend that the board approve the following five-year forecast as shown in Exhibit O.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Discussion. I think we've talked about this a lot.
Yes.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Item number five, the transfers that I've already referred to, I recommend that the board approve the following transfers from the general fund to the Capital Projects Fund and to the Severance Fund.
So moved.
Second.
That fee is the auditor's fee? The $37,000.
Where are you looking, Mark?
On the.
On the NEXUS pipeline transfer.
Right, right before the total of your transfer.
Yeah, right above the total.
Right above the yellow highlight, the total. Yes.
Just assume that's what it is.
.0119.
Oh, on that sheet, yes, yes, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at that. Yes, and that's just an estimate because it's like pulling out the fees associated with the pipeline based on how much revenue we receive from that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it is. It gets you everywhere, don't it?
Yeah, coming and going.
More of our $37,000. Taken by the county or the state.
Yeah, and, um, I, I don't have the exact number, but we were, it was explained that there's more because of the pipeline sort of settlement as well too, and I wish I had that, that breakout, but, uh, had, had additional auditor expenses because of receiving the additional money from the pipeline. And, um, you know, since we, it didn't come up in this meeting, I'll just say too, the reason that pipeline money, the amount is so large this year is related to past years when they had the legal settlement, settlement that determined a higher value for the pipeline, and so we're receiving much more money for the pipeline this one year.
Yeah, one time.
One time.
Yeah, one-time deal. Um, let, in the fall, like, we received the first half of the year, the settlement was 686,000 and change. This transfer, the pipeline portion itself is going to be, um, three.
About 3.2 million.
3.2 million, total of 3.8 million for the year, so very helpful.
So which is, you guys knew, because when, once NEXUS settled, early in the fall, we were able to, you said combine the roof, let's just get it. That was, you know, the recommendation, which is why we knew we were able to do this.
Should we kind of go back to this 686 then after that?
No, so basically moving forward, since they've done their back payment, we're just going to be on a set cycle for about 1.8 to 1.9 million dollars a year.
A year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that'll decrease over the 30, 30 years?
Yes, and if you ask the Ryan or the auditors about that, they said it really, that what NEXUS will do is all pipelines do, they'll, will re-renew the lease.
Yeah, because you have an improvement.
And then it'll go, so it really isn't going to, there'll be a decrease, but it won't be like it ends and then you don't get any more money. They'll actually do a re-renewal.
Okay.
Is what they said, which I didn't know that.
But it keeps depreciating?
A little bit.
Yeah, unless, unless they do improvements.
Yeah, so it's like 24,000, let's say 25,000 a year, I think is basically what they said.
Plus the auditor's take.
Plus the auditor's?
Yeah, B.
Yeah, that's before the fees.
That's less than what the auditor takes.
You did not vote on that yet, correct, right?
No, we didn't.
We did not.
Yeah, let's go through that.
Yeah.
Okay, roll calls. Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're getting wrapped up here. So we're on to personnel, so if the board members are good, I will go through this, but I will consent personnel.
Yeah.
Uh, so May is just an odd one, so it looks long, but it's just the normal. So we have some certified non-renewal tutors. As our contract reads, we non-renew our tutors. We have our non-renewal, our substitutes, so the substitutes that you guys hire throughout, that we recommend for hiring. Uh, we have two continuing contracts. We have some classified continuing contracts. We have the certified limited teaching contracts that you guys renew yearly of our teachers. We have, yeah, the classified reductions in force, which those are a pair of professionals that we redo every year and then bring them back as needed. We have our classified employment two, uh, two-year, third two-year limited contracts. We have classified second two-year limited contracts, classified first two-year limited contracts. We have our certified retirements. Uh, we have a certified staff hires of over a few that we're replacing. Uh, we have some classified staff hires on there. We have some classified substitute hires just to finish out the year. We have some preferred sub-hires if we need any for the remainder of the year, because we still have 19 days. Uh, then we have, uh, supplementals that finish up for this year and, uh, some supplementals for next year, and we'll have most of the, the rest of them wrapped up next month also.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
And Dan, could you give us an update on the athletic director search?
Yes, so on the athletic director search, we had roughly 12 candidates apply for the athletic director position. The, uh, first round interviews went last week, and they interviewed, I think, 10. The committee did, so the first round committee did. Uh, the first round committee made a recommendation of three currently to bring back for second round, so those second rounds will be starting here next week and over the course of three days. After that, we will see where we're at, if we need to do a third round, or if we can possibly make a recommendation to the board for the June meeting. I'll keep you guys abreast of that next week.
Are you involved in the second round?
I am involved in the second round.
Mr. Haley, are you here till?
June, end of June, maybe even July, he said, you know, he is, uh, we're going to be in a good position for the new AD because Chad's very organized
to drop.
on his aspect of it, so. Upcoming events, as you can see on here, we're wrapping up the end of the year. We got prom this weekend. We got, uh, concerts, elementary, middle school, high school, different concerts, spotlights, banquet season's coming up. Back, uh, bachel, uh, bachelorette, sorry, I say that wrong.
Baccalaureate.
Yes, sorry. So bad. Graduation is obviously June 1st.
What time is that?
Uh.
Two or three o'clock?
Two o'clock. Two o'clock.
Were they at 1:00?
We would like board members to appear at 1:00 PM.
I want to hand out a diploma to someone.
A certain diploma?
Certain person.
Yeah. Um, that's what we have for upcoming events. Obviously, then Karen?
The core meeting is June 12th. They're in the DLZ. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you very much.